Okay, it's seven o'clock. I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Urbana City Council for September 30th, 2024. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Ms. Hershey?
Here.
Ms. Colasetti?
Here.
Ms. Bishop?
Here.
Ms. Wilkin?
Here.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Here.
Next item on the agenda is approval of minutes from the meeting of September 9th, 2024. Could we have a motion, please?
So moved.
Moved by Mary Alice. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Jaya. Any substantial corrections? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That motion passes. There are no additions to the agenda. We'll move on to presentations and public input. If anyone wishes to address the Urbana City Council, please step up to the microphone, state your name for the record, and you'll have up to five minutes to speak.
Barbara Kessel, resident of Urbana. I am speaking to you tonight on behalf of the American Civil Liberties Union of Illinois. Please allow me to express our collective concern over the apparent recent change to the format for meetings of the Alternative Response Task Force. We encourage the council to insist that meetings of the task force be inclusive and transparent, drawing the broadest possible input and response from the entire Urbana community, and allowing community members to listen in to the proceedings. Any changes to the format would mean eliminating direct public participation and removing any requirement that the meetings be livestreamed on public access television or recorded for future viewing. It is our understanding that this change has been enforced at the recommendation of the consultants who are working with community officials on the project. The desire of the consultants should not be allowed to override the interests of the The Alternative Response Task Force grew out of concerns from every neighborhood of Urbana about the policies and procedures for policing in the community, and a desire to find alternative ways to address some of the work that we ask police to undertake. The scores of residents who expressed those concerns and demanded change should not be forced to await a final report from a consultant before being able to further share their vision for the future of policing in Urbana. In the four years since George Floyd was murdered by a police officer in Minnesota, Urbana residents from all backgrounds and parts of the community have cried out for a change in how our police operate in this community. The process of finding ways to meet these calls should not be held behind closed doors. We encourage you to allow the sunshine through with maximum transparency. Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to address the council?
My name is Chris Sully. I'm a longtime resident of the Champaign-Urbana community. I really feel like a lot of voices came out. I'm not going to say anything nearly as well presented as was just said, but I echo most of it, that there were so many community voices involved and asking, expecting them to come back out and police whether you're delivering on that dream isn't really a reasonable. We're not going to maybe be able to get a full room of people to come check months, as months go by, as to whether you're doing this correctly. We need to trust you. We need the transparency. We need the stakeholders of the community involved in the process. We have value added just by having people be able to watch as it's occurring. And I just really want you to keep those interests at heart, really represent the communities involved, and have those community leaders involved in this process. It's just something I really want you to keep as a really primary concern. And I appreciate your time, and have a great evening.
Lived in Champaign-Urbana since 2015. I'm also echoing the, and I'm also going to do this, I just got out of a ballet class, so please excuse my appearance and stuffing a sandwich in my face on the way here and in your room. I also was completely shocked, I heard just today, that Barry Dunn consultant suggested and that this, that it is even being entertained, that anyone would take up the consultant's recommendation that this conversation be closed in some way to the public. I found so deeply disturbing that I'm here representing. I can't tell you how many people who are equally disturbed by this news, who just received it today, who are not able to make it. I think some of their emails are rolling in late or today, but, and folks maybe knew about this sooner than I did, but I consider myself one of the people who was expecting to be able to attend these meetings, who was not, for various other reasons and responsibilities, able to commit to being a part of the task force, but really care deeply about this community and that this doesn't happen behind closed doors. And I think the implication of wanting to have something like this happen behind closed doors really speaks, I think, from, I don't know, I just get the sense that, you know, this gives, this sends a signal to the public that they are, would be considered disruptors to a conversation that is about them, that is about community, that is about working with our police, our first responders. All of us are in the same community, and we deserve to be in the same room together, even if the public is present, I, you know, and not commenting, you know. Just because the public is there doesn't mean they're going to riot. It means they care, and they want to be there, and they want, you know, we all think together. People don't think in isolation. Just because someone is there on a task force, there's, you know, hundreds of people, or whoever is in their circles and in their network, want to be there to support them, to hear the same things, to think with them. I mean, this is how I find this community to be so incredibly special, and why I keep living here. So I just, the idea that a conversation like this would be closed is dangerous and scary, and I just, I can't believe it. So I don't think we need that, you know, we, the tools of, that are taken from, you know, something like, all the work you've done to do this diligent work with a consultant, right? Like, that is a set of information. Those are tools that can take to use to have conversations. It doesn't mean that they get to dictate how we have the conversation in the community. That is up to you all in consultation with everyone here. We don't need to take that suggestion. Who cares? Who cares what they suggest? I mean, they have their reasons, but they're corporate. They are not the city of Urbana, and they are not the people of Urbana, and this is absolutely, absolutely terrifying. I mean, we don't need to pre-erode freedoms that may be eroded in a month, okay? Like, we need to all be able to be in a room together. And, you know, sorry if I'm getting a little up in arms here, but I haven't spoken off the cuff on this microphone for a while, but this is really, just really, really scary to me. So I'm going to keep using up my last minute as much as I can, because I, it's, it's just, that decision just doesn't sound like Urbana, it doesn't sound like a democratic process, it doesn't sound like what this community deserves. I just don't understand, and maybe, you know, someone can enlighten me about what the benefits of having those conversations closed would be. The folks who have signed up to be a part of these conversations already, I think, my understanding is, thought that these would be public, so it's not like this would be protecting some sort of a private conversation that was going to happen elsewhere. So changing the terms of this now is scary. I urge every single one of you not to let this happen. So with that, I will put this microphone back and pass it on to whoever else, and hope you do the right thing.
I'm a resident of Urbana. My understanding is that this recommendation was made by Barry Dunn consultants. Part of the problems is that, one, as part of this process, we should value transparency and accountability. Part of the reason we're considering these alternative police models is that, in the past, officers, like the one who killed George Floyd, who killed Sonia Massey, who, there are countless names of people who've been killed, because that accountability was not in place. So part of the reason we're having this conversation is because we want accountability, and we want transparency. Now, to be fair to Barry Dunn, I'm imagining that perhaps they see a desire to close the conversation because perhaps ideas that are data-driven would not be approved by the public. If those ideas are data-driven, if those ideas have merit, then the public should be allowed to see the evidence, should be allowed to be part of the conversation, because having one person in the driver's seat and one person who will feel the impact of the crash is not optimal. We all are in this together. And I can certainly see a desire to make sure that we adopt data-driven ideas. At the same time, the community is a shareholder in this. Our taxes are paying for the Barry Dunn report, and our taxes are paying to have, for the implementation of their ideas, and therefore, I think, we have earned a place at the table. And please allow us to have that place at the table, and reject their recommendations. Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to speak?
I live in Champaign, but I work in Urbana, I shop in Urbana, I'm involved in organizations here, I feel like I have a stake in how the city goes. And of course, I'm going to talk about the, how the discussions for the alternative response model could go. And I guess one, one way to think about it, so of course, I am here to say that I hope that they will indeed be open to the public, or at least that a lot of the discussions will be. And one way to think about that is, what it's trying to do is to shape something that is very different from how things have been done in the past. And the bureaucratic inertia is always to make things work in the future the way they have in the past. So if you, the public has been working hard to try to say, we want, we want things to run, to be run differently, in the way that the city responds to problems among its citizens. So I hope that you will allow the discussions as to how that will develop to happen in public as a counterbalance to exactly that bureaucratic inertia. Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to speak?
My name is Marina Manetti. I live in Urbana, Illinois. And I read today about the intentions of, wishes of Barry Dunn, and I was horrified, horrified, because it sounds like things are going to be happening behind closed doors. We don't even have any access to the footage of the discussions, as described by Mr. Dunn. I think this is atrocious. I think the public needs a voice in their own affairs, and they need to be present when decisions are made. And to sit here and exclude our voice, and we're the ones who are being serviced? What is that? I don't think it's intention of service. There's something else going on behind closed doors, literally. And it's terrifying to hear this new plan of action. It's exactly what we asked not to happen. And if you call yourselves representatives, you will be against this from start to finish. Thank you, and I'm sorry about even hearing of the suggestion.
Hi, my name's Jane McClintock. I'm a resident of Urbana, and I will just briefly also express that I think the public has shown that they have a lot of interest in this Alternative Response Task Force, and I was really excited to see the list. I feel like we've got a dream team, and I'm excited to see what y'all come up with, but I'd like to see it. And so I think the idea to have it behind closed doors is unproductive, and, you know, I think the community is going to be really interested and going to be able to be helpful. So thanks for considering.
I'm bad at the microphone, so excuse me. First of all, I want to thank all the fire department and the law enforcement and the staff today. Everybody does work hard. I understand Urbana has been, for a long time, a small community, and communities change as you have more people move into the area. And I just wanted to introduce myself, say hi, I'm new to all of this, and I think, I hope that everybody comes to a resolution with the change that's coming, so, thank you.
What's your name?
My name's William Argus.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Does anyone else wish to speak? Thank you. We have some emails to read and to the record. The first is from soups7@aul.com. That is, I understand this, it only applies to gasoline, not to diesel or electric-powered vehicles. This is regarding a tax increase to allow more improvement to Urbana streets. This on its face is not equitable, and one of the top causes of deterioration of our roads is weight. Electric vehicles tend to weigh one and a half to two times the equivalent model. Not many diesel cars anymore, but many trucks are. The F-150 diesel weighs approximately 30% more than the gas model. None of the vehicles in the preceding paragraph pay anything into the fuel tax fund. We won't even get into 40,000 to 78,000-pound MTD buses, no road taxes there either. This isn't fair. The Urbana has, City Council has a reputation for being fair. Change this or kill it. It's from Steve Campbell. This is an email from Addie Gray. My name is Addison Gray, I'm a resident of Ward 2. I'm writing to express my strong opposition to recent changes in the format of the Alternative Response Task Force meetings. Initially, the public was assured that those meetings would be accessible through in-person attendance, live broadcasts on UP-TV, and archived recordings. This transparency is crucial for maintaining public trust in the decision-making process on such an important issue as public safety. The decision to follow the Barry Dunn's consultant's recommendation to discourage public participation, not record the meetings, and delay public input until after the task force has completed its work is unacceptable. It effectively shuts the public out of crucial discussions and discuss, decisions that will impact the entire community. Operating behind closed doors under the guise of expert advice betrays the principles of transparency and accountability that should guide our local government. I urge the council to reject this new arrangement, reinstate full public access to the task force meetings. The community must be able to engage in these discussions as they happen, not after decisions have already been made and reports filed. Public participation is a fundamental right, and the exclusion of the public from these proceedings is a blatant disregard for that right. I strongly encourage the council to restore the previous format that allowed public attendance, live streaming, and recorded archives. Anything less than full transparency will erode trust between the city and the residents. I expect the council to take these concerns seriously. This email is from Bren. I would like to see a department that does not serve an enforcement function responding to the vast majority of emergency calls that are not violent crimes in progress. This would free up the police to respond to calls that are enforcement issues and to investigate violent crimes. Many people have opinions about how we achieve public safety, and there may be good reasons for a public safety plan that does not match what I personally want. If the meetings of the Alternative Response Task Force were recorded and available for the public to listen to in a timely manner, all of us could gain confidence that the alternatives each of us would prefer were considered, and that the trade-offs the task force had to make were needed and appropriate. This plan, the task force recommends, and improve the usefulness of suggestions members of the public make to the council on this topic. Brent Larkum, Ward 6 resident. This email's from Adam. I understand there will be a discussion about Alternative Response Task Force meeting access tonight. This seems like a simple decision. Allow the community to participate in the process, be that by submitting their concerns to the task force or following along with the meetings. We all know this alternative response has been something the community has been excited about for years, and that public safety is the topic that gets the most civic engagement. Why close these meetings? What is it that someone doesn't want the public to see? Is it because having an open democratic process is inconvenient? If so, do you feel that's an acceptable justification? If you supported the formation of an alternative response, is this what you imagined? A group which excludes every individual who applied, only accepting organizations, having secret meetings to decide who will respond to calls for service? To kill the transparency of the process and only result, release the results would cause people to distrust the process. They will feel like the system is not working for them. This recommendation from Barry Dunn may be accepted in some cities, but it does not fit with Urbana's values. Our org chart has the people at the top, that's not the group who should be excluded. According to Imagine, Urbana are city values. The city ensures equity, inclusion in all city services, the city is a welcoming community. I ask you take a stand for democracy and government transparency. Open up these alternative response meetings to allow the public to provide direct input. Welcome public participation rather than excluding it. Thank you, Adam Nichols. The next email's from Sana Sabawala. Dear Urbana City Council, I'm sorry I couldn't be here today to provide input in person. I'm very disappointed to hear that you're considering making the alternative response to policing task force private, rather than having all the meetings open to the public. I had to come to City Hall to try to be present for the meeting on September 17th, that was canceled. In my public comments earlier this year, I criticized Barry Dunn and the council for not being community-engaged. I am a seventh PhD candidate at U of I, and I do community-engaged work, and I understand it's a laborious task, but it's worth it to know that what the community needs. Closing off the process of the alternative task force, not allowing the public to see those conversations, and not allowing public input into those conversations goes against the basic tenets of community engagement. Barry Dunn, based on the reports we've seen from them, doesn't have a good track record of being engaged with the local Urbana community. I don't think the advice of an outside consultant's count for more than what Urbana constituents want. We want transparency, and we want to say in shaping what alternative responses to policing look like in this community. Money was set aside for alternatives to policing because of what the community asks for. Don't cut us out of the process now. As you saw with the police budget, the people of Urbana want to be more involved in the process of creating alternatives to policing. Allow us to be. At the very least, be transparent, have these meetings publicly. There's already so much mistrust, why create a situation where there's more secrecy and more barriers between the community and the government? I urge you to allow for public meetings and public input at all points in the process of creating alternative responses to policing. Thank you, Sana Sabawala. Next email's from Isabel Scott. I'm a resident of Champaign, but I am frequently in Urbana. I'm writing to you today because I'm very concerned about the Barry Dunn's consultants' push to have the Alternative Response Task Force meetings and reports conducted out of the public's eye. I'm wholeheartedly in support of policing alternatives. I'm happy to see that Urbana is giving serious consideration to this. However, any alternatives to policing must rely on community input and support, especially if they are to bridge the very real and valid mistrust that marginalized communities have of policing. I question as to why the Barry Dunn consultant is pushing for these meetings to be private with no public input. I think this is anti-ethical to what the council wants to achieve. Urbana deserves transparency from its elected officials and outside consultants brought to work on issues facing the city. Anything less than that is deeply underhanded and irresponsible. If Barry Dunn doesn't want public input on their plans for the Alternative Response Task Force, then I believe they are not suited to be working with the Urbana community. If their work affects the community, then the community deserves to know about it and have an archive of past decisions made by the task force to hold them accountable. Again, I'm worried about the consequences for Urbana's most vulnerable if an outside entity is allowed to make decisions regarding something as challenging and complex as policing without any public oversight. To me, this sounds like a recipe for disaster, or potentially a scandal. Please vote against the new arrangement for an ARTF meetings. Protect your constituents and those in Urbana and Champaign community who do not have a voice in this matter. Transparency must be the task force's guide. Regards, Isabel Scott. That's it for communications. We'll move on to council input and communication. Jaya?
Thank you. So I think much of what I've been thinking and feeling over the last few days has already been articulated by members of the public. I will say, as someone who is part of initiating this process, it was quite a shock to me to hear that this change was made without consultation of the whole city council. I am grateful to council members Evans and Wilkin for making sure our conversation was on the agenda for tonight, and appreciate the conversations I've had so far around this topic. I do think that making sure that this is a transparent process, where the community is aware of the whole, all of the steps along the way is really important, is certainly what I was envisioning for this task force. So we'll be further discussing this later tonight, but just wanted to state my appreciation for the members of the public who've already spoken to this issue.
Just gonna echo the same thing, sorry about thanking the public for your input, and that I agree with the sentiments of wanting a transparent process here, and we will be discussing this. I'll save some of my points for then, but stay tuned, and thank you for your input.
Any other comments? Okay. We're going to move on to appointments tonight. This is out of the typical order of our agenda, because we have, at least two of the appointees are actually on active duty, and they and their entire company are here tonight, and we want to get these hopefully done before they are toned out on a call. So thank you for allowing us to change the order here. So Famy Fletcher, our human resources manager, is going to introduce the appointments and to give you background on the selection process, and higher, selection process that these candidates went through.
Good evening. As Mayor Marlin let us all know, we've got four staff appointments on tonight's agenda. I'm here to provide a little bit of an introduction for these candidates, and tell you a little bit about the process that we bit about the process that we underwent to select these candidates. Tonight's staff appointments include the mayor's recommendation to reappoint Rich Searls as deputy chief of police. And then there are three original appointments, and those include David Smizer as deputy chief of police, Stephen Doggett as deputy fire chief, and Tal Prendergast as deputy fire chief. You have all received either resumes and/or bios for all of the candidates, and as Mayor Marlin pointed out, we do have two of the candidates who are on duty tonight, and so they may get toned out. So I'll try to keep this brief, so we can keep them in the room throughout this process. So let's all keep our fingers crossed that we don't have any emergencies in the city of Urbana in the next 10 minutes or so. So we have, we have conducted very rigorous internal selection processes to select these candidates. Both the chief of police and the fire chief collaborated very closely with human resources to design and facilitate internal selection processes that were rigorous and comprehensive. And so in introducing the candidates to you tonight, I just want to reiterate that tonight is not intended to be an interview or to replace those selection processes. We implemented in each case, in both the police department and in the fire department, internal selection processes that identified the need for well-qualified competitive candidates who could provide top-level support to both of our chiefs. As you all know, both chiefs are, were recruited from outside the city relatively recently, and we recognized that it was important for them to have top-level support, who could provide important institutional knowledge, as well as to provide our current employees with important promotional opportunities. Each of the processes included multiple phases of selection and different types of analysis for each candidate, and both processes yielded candidates, as we, as I said, who were qualified, very experienced, and competitive. We're very excited and proud to be introducing these candidates to you tonight, and I believe that we have both of them in the room right now. So we will begin with the two deputy fire chief candidates, Steve Doggett and Tal Prendergast, who will be joined here by Fire Chief Demande.
And each of these appointments will be taken individually. So I'll begin with Stephen Doggett. City council has asked to approve the appointment of Stephen Doggett to the office of deputy fire chief for a term ending June 30th, 2025. Just to note, all of these terms end June 30th, 2025. They won't extend past the fiscal year or the term of the current mayor and city council, and that's by statute. The council has received resumes and bios for these candidates, but briefly, Stephen Doggett has served as fire lieutenant for the Urbana Fire Department since 2019. Doggett has been with the Urbana Fire Department for 18 years, and during that time, he's served as an arson investigator, worked closely with the finance department as a citywide budget reviewer, represented fire employees on the employee health insurance committee. Stephen Doggett was a field staff instructor at the University of Illinois Fire Service Institute and is currently the Illinois State Fire Academy Program Director. Prior to the fire department, Doggett was a police officer for the village of Westville. He holds a bachelor's degree in fire service management from Southern Illinois University Carbondale, and a master's in public administration from the University of Illinois Springfield. The council is asked to approve the appointment of Stephen Doggett to the office of deputy fire chief for a term ending June 30th, 2025. So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mary Alice, seconded by Sharice. I'm sorry, that was James. Many apologies. Grace.
Set some comments/clarification, and first of all, thank you for your service and wanting to continue in new expanded roles. And then just some point of clarification here. I believe that this will, these will exceed the term of the current mayor's elected term, but we did allow that in the ordinance. It says shall not exceed two years or the mayor, pointing mayor's elected term unless otherwise specified. And I think we have otherwise specified here, and I think it makes sense to not have a term for just a few months. So I think that this does make sense, but do want to clarify that it does exceed the term as far as I understand it, and we have specified, and I think that makes sense. Thank you.
Will the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colasetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes. Thank you, and congratulations.
Thank you.
Next appointment up is for Tal Prendergast to the office of deputy fire chief for a term ending June 30th, 2025. As a brief background, Tal Prendergast has served as fire lieutenant for the Urbana Fire Department since 2020. He has been with the Urbana Fire Department for 15 years, and during that time, Prendergast has served in progressively responsible roles. He was previously a program director at the University of Illinois Fire Service Institute and is currently the firefighting program administrative coordinator. Prior to joining the Urbana Fire Department, Prendergast was a firefighter for the Danville Fire Department. He holds a bachelor's degree in technical systems management from the University of Illinois. City council has asked to approve the appointment of Tal Prendergast to the office of deputy fire chief. Can I have a motion, please?
Move to approve.
Moved by Sharice?
The appointment of Tal Prendergast.
Second. Seconded by Shandra. Will the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colasetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes. Congratulations. Did you want to say anything, chief?
Yeah, I just want to thank the council for the addition of a second deputy. Very much needed, and we appreciate it, so thank you.
And you'll be seeing more of these two gentlemen as we go forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
And coming up, we now have the reappointment of deputy chief Richard Searls and appointment of David Smizer, Smizer to the office of deputy chief, and they'll be accompanied by Chief Boone. So city council has asked to approve the reappointment, and this is a reappointment for Richard Searls to the office of deputy chief of police for a term ending June 30th, 2025. Richard Searls has served as deputy chief of police since 2019. Searls has 27 years of law enforcement experience at the city of Urbana, moving up through the ranks after beginning as a patrol officer. Richard Searls was also an adjunct instructor for the Police Training Institute for 10 years. He holds a bachelor's degree in sociology with a concentration in criminology and a master's in business administration. City council has asked to approve the reappointment of Richard Searls to the office of deputy chief of police for the term ending June 30th, 2025.
Move to approve the appointment of Richard Searls as deputy chief of police?
Second. Moved by Sharice, seconded by Jaya. I'm sorry, I am just not listening. Mary Alice. I guess I'm just, I'm just thrown off by having all seven people here. Too many to keep track of. That was moved by Sharice, seconded by Mary Alice. Will the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
No.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colasetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
No.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes. And we have an appointment. The city council has asked to approve the appointment of David Smizer to the office of deputy chief of police for a term ending June 30th, 2025. David Smizer has served as police lieutenant since 2019. Smizer has 22 years of law enforcement experience at the city of Urbana, and has held positions in both patrol and investigations. Before graduating high school, Smizer enlisted in the Illinois Army National Guard and served eight years. He holds a bachelor's degree in law enforcement and justice administration from Western Illinois University. Most recently, Smizer graduated from the FBI National Academy, obtaining graduate-level credit through the University of Virginia. City council has asked to approve the appointment of David Smizer to the office of deputy chief of police for a term ending June 30th, 2025. Is there a motion?
I'll move approval of David Smizer for deputy chief of police.
Second.
I'm gonna give that to James. Okay. Any comments? Will the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colasetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes. Congratulations. Chief Boone, would you like to say a few words?
Yes. Thank you all for approving these gentlemen. Having been here a little over a year, I can assure you they had the physical and mental necessities to push this department to a 21st century department, something I promised you upon hiring me. More importantly, the gentleman to my immediate right could have been your chief. You really didn't need me. He has the skill set, the personality, the intellect, and the drive, and he is deeply committed to this city as well as this department. I feel compelled to say that. I'm very, very pleased at Deputy Chief Dave Smizer, a recent graduate of the FBI National Academy, a organization that only takes the very, very best in the world. That's nothing to sneeze at. So full steam ahead, we're gonna go for it, we're gonna salute smartly, and we're gonna get this job done. Thank you all.
Thank you. Congratulations again. And we have three other appointments to boards and commissions, and I'll like to take them as a group, if that's all right. The first is to approve the appointment of Carmen Franks to the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Commission for a term ending June 30th, 2027. To more effectively fulfill the responsibilities of contributing to and attending public meetings, city engineer John Zeeman has requested that the role of Urbana Public Works Representative on the B-PAC be delegated to an assistant city engineer, and has recommended Carmen Franks, assistant city engineer, to take the Urbana Public Works seat on B-PAC. She's been an assistant city engineer with Urbana for the past two years. She's focused on areas that intersect with B-PAC's mission, including public involvement, transportation studies and plans, and grant application. Second request for an appointment is to approve the appointment of Elise Duty Jones to the Tree Commission for a term ending June 30th, 2027. Elise Duty Jones has been a resident of Urbana for over seven years, currently a program manager at Parkland Gaholage. She operates and guides a job-training readiness program called Highway Construction Careers Training Program, HCCTP, which is an Illinois Department of Transportation-funded initiative. The program trains people in safety processes for construction or utilities which can potentially involve tree trimming. She writes, "I am concerned about the loss of so many mature trees in Urbana. It's important to counter this loss with replanting of appropriate trees for our region. The derecho in the summer of 2023 left our family home without power for six days. The cause was unmaintained trees that fell on power lines and a transformer. Appropriate plantings would prepare neighborhoods to better withstand these intense storms." And the final appointment is for the youth seat on the Sustainability Advisory Commission. This is for an individual who is under the age of 18 years old, I believe between 16 and 18 years old. So we have a wonderful candidate. His name is Gabriel Dussard. He's been a resident of Urbana for over 12 years, currently a senior at Urbana High School. Dussard has volunteered more than 50 community service hours. He earned the bronze mayoral recognition award. Most of his hours were earned by volunteering at the Urbana Heart, Park District, Habitat for Humanity, and Solidarity Gardens. He's also educated the public about the climate change at a booth at the Urbana Market at the Square. And he wrote, "Climate change is undoubtedly the biggest issue for people of my generation. Being born into a world where it's already taken hold in so many ways means that we need to learn to contend with it and fight it. Over the past three or so years, particularly since the big wildfires in California came onto my radar, I've tried to support the cause on this issue in whatever ways I could. What this means for me was everything from self-education on the topic to starting my own club pertaining to it. Joining the Sustainability Advisory Commission would be the next step in my journey to do whatever I can to at least soften the blow of climate change. Acting as a reference and reminder to the people in charge that their policies affect all of this is greatly important. That's why I feel I need to get my voice out however possible. Doing so in my hometown would not only be an excellent first step, but extraordinarily meaningful in the sense that it could let me potentially see some tangible change in my local community." And this appointment is for a term ending April 24th, 2025, which is his 18th birthday. And per the enacting, enabling ordinance for the Sustainability Advisory Commission, this appointment is for people under the age of 18. But there will be a seat open for people over the age of 18, so we hope he does continue on the commission after that. So I would entertain a motion to approve appointments for these three individuals. So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mary Alice, seconded by Grace. Any discussion? Yes.
I'd like to just say that we have a staff member who will be hopefully joining one of our boards, a community member and a youth member. So I think this is a wonderful opportunity to also encourage other people within the community to apply, and I'm really happy we were able to fill the youth seat on the Sustainability Committee.
Will the clerk, Grace?
Thank you. Similarly, wanted to thank those who have stepped up to join these commissions on a volunteer basis. It's something I really appreciate and know that it's not something to be taken super lightly, and I hope that we can connect with the commissions and continue that relationship as city administration and as the council, so that people can feel included and like they're contributing on these volunteer positions. And I absolutely agree that it's great to have a youth member of the Sustainability Advisory Commission. From my experience, that's been vacant for quite a while. I wish we had more than these seven months or so until this person turns 18, but I'm glad that that seat is filled for a while, and I hope that they enjoy that experience. Thank you.
Any other comments? Will the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colasetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes. Thank you. Congratulations to all. And we'll move on to reports of the standing committee. We have none, committee of the whole. Grace, welcome.
On the regular agenda, on behalf of the committee of the whole, I recommend, present for approval, resolution number 2022-09-063R, a resolution for improvement under the Illinois Highway Code State Motor Fuel Tax for Lincoln Avenue, Washer Drive to Killarney Street Road Diet Demonstration.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. Mary Alice.
So I don't know if anybody is here that would be able to answer my questions. We did receive an email from someone kind of giving us some background in terms of this proposal and also the future of the, of the road. I think I had one big question, and I don't know if anybody here can answer it, which is it sounded to me like in that email that regardless of what the results are of this study, that they're gonna move forward with the road diet. That's how I took the email to read. I don't know if others read that as well. I know that one of their comments was on safety, right? right? The whole reason that this is being proposed is to make it a safer street. But, yeah, I don't know if anybody is here that can answer that.
Maybe a little bit. Sorry, that's really loud. I had a brief conversation with John Zeeman before he left, so I don't know everything, but I do believe the way you read it is correct, is that this is to get, the point of doing the demonstration is to gather some data and maybe improve the design. But at this point, you know, I think the second point is absent something that would dramatically change the purpose of the project. It's not a try it and seed out. It's a try it to see what the final configuration will be. So, that's my understanding of it.
Our transportation engineers are all at a conference this week. James.
Yeah, I would say that's not the impression I got at all from the Committee of the Whole conversation. I thought John talked about the viability of the road diet and expressed some question as to whether we would learn that we could do it. Not that he questioned that we could do it, that we would learn things that would influence what we would do. And I would assume, I'm going to assume, that one of the things is not doing it or having a different plan for the road if the data shows that it is not effective.
Mary Alice.
What's the timing on this in terms of, does it have to? I know that they're using funds from the state to do this. When is the? I'd like some clarity on this. And so, I don't know if holding it in council would be detrimental to the grant, is what I'm trying to figure out.
Since this was for a test that's supposed to happen next fall, it doesn't feel like time is of the essence, but I don't know what the state deadlines are.
I don't have that information. Grace.
Okay, what I want to say is just, John and I briefly talked about this a while back. This is a while back. Because the point is, is I've watched Lincoln Avenue evolve through my many years of living in that area. And the one thing, you know, like now there are stoplights where there were once were stop signs, and before then, there weren't anything, you know. I think that at the very least, the issue is to try to, because Lincoln Avenue is a gateway right into the University of Illinois, to try to make that area, which is in my ward, as safe as possible with people coming in. Because there are a couple of intersections, especially the one on Bradley and Lincoln, that are very dangerous. And right now, this model would serve better to help regarding those intersections. So, I think that it would, at the very least, cut down on near misses because what you're also, what we're also going to have with this new design is a new fire station that's not far from that, coming also probably coming through that intersection. And I think it would just, it would make the traffic that goes through there more, what's the word? I can't, I want, easy is too, is like such a simple third-grade word. But it would facilitate the traffic moving and getting in their lanes as far as they can go. Because right now, it is, it is not, it is dangerous to go through some of those intersections. So, I think it's something to consider, having one lane that goes north, one lane that goes south, and the lane in the middle. Because we also have a lot of residents, residents that live on Lincoln Avenue that have to make left turns to get into their driveways or their streets. So, it's something to be considered.
James and Grace, oh, Grace.
Thank you. I, yeah, support fixing and making this area safer for pedestrians as we discussed in the last meeting. I also wanted to point out what I'm reading in the email from B-PAC is they're encouraging the city to apply for another round of these safe, safer streets grants. Yeah, thank you. Safe streets for all, thank you. And that's something that I agree with and would echo because I think it would be unfortunate to do a study and a demonstration and find out what are some safer options and then just remove it and not have the funds to actually do the thing in the end. So, I echo that B-PAC urge that the city look for applying in 2025, coming up for the final stages of actually doing the construction for this project.
I just wanted to follow up. I mentioned the thing, because John did say next fall so that they could capture the impact on a football weekend. But I see now that Justin's note says they're going to do it in the spring, and graduation is going to be their high-use weekend, which I don't think is at all like a football weekend. So, the story has changed a little bit in a way that with no one here to answer the question, I am a little, I want to do this, but I want to understand when exactly we're going to do it. And if there's a, like I was interested in an exit criteria, if it causes problems, I want to know that there's a way to shift gears if it doesn't look like it's working either for the traffic flow or for the neighborhood or, you know, whatever comes out of the test. If you're going to do the test, if you're going to do it anyway, why do the test? If you're doing the test, you should have a way to learn from the test and change.
Sounds like there are enough questions that we need to get answers before you vote on this. So, I would say we keep this, well, this is council.
By the way,
Yes.
it was, it is allowable for us to postpone action on this to the next Committee of the Whole meeting. And that is an interruptible motion that you can do on a main motion, which we didn't do last.
And if it turns out there's some time sensitivity?
But I move that we postpone this to the Committee of the, the next Committee of the Whole meeting.
It's possible that there's time sensitivity on this, in which case we could schedule a special council meeting next week to consider it. Would that work for you?
We'll be meeting for COW on Monday, though, right?
Correct. I'm saying if we need to take action next week.
I think we'd have to do it that night of the COW meeting.
Right, correct.
Because we can't take it, if we postpone it to a certain date, we can't take it up before then.
So, I'm actually going to recommend you just defer it to a future council meeting. That way, if there is a need for a special council meeting, we have the authority to do it. Because if you move it to Committee of the Whole, you cannot turn around and adopt it the same evening at a special council meeting because we cannot, it's in council rules. We can't do that.
So, I'll move that we defer it to the next council meeting.
Second.
Discussion. Will the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colasetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes.
Next, present for approval, move for approval, Resolution Number 2024-09-030, An Ordinance Amending Urbana City Code, Chapter 22, Sections 22, 31, and 22, 34, Local Motor Fuel Tax.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. Grace.
I appreciate and agree with some of the things brought up in our input here about electric vehicles and buses and larger vehicles that do a lot of the heavy damage on roads in addition to some of the natural causes that are unavoidable. So, I didn't know if we have anyone that could speak on some insight into that, on if that, how that plays into this, maybe down the road.
James.
Well, I did want to correct the misconception that diesel fuel would be exempt from this. Diesel fuel would pay for this, just like gasoline. It does not address electric vehicles. There was a mention of the MTD. As a person who has raised this question before about the impact of MTD vehicles, because MTD is a public service, is its own governmental entity. They, they aren't covered, we don't, we don't pursue the MTD. I know campus doesn't pursue the MTD for the wear and tear that the buses make on the roads because ridership on the MTD represents a number of cars that are not being driven at the same time. So, there's, there's perceived as a trade-off, and there's also a perception that it's another government entity. So, you know, taxing them when they already tax the public for, through the property tax for their operation doesn't make as much sense.
Charisse.
I just wanted to say additionally, a lot of the MTD buses also use natural gas or they're some kind of hybrid. So, you know, that, that may also be an issue when you're talking about motor fuel tax because they use very, very few of the buses use their motor fuel, so to speak. They have natural gas and hydrogen and so on and so forth.
Grace.
I imagine people might not have the answers right now, but just as we're talking about that, I was wondering about if the MTD station is in Urbana. My understanding is that they have their own fueling station. And so, I guess I'm wondering if that counts as private exempt from the taxes or how that works. I don't know if anyone here tonight knows.
The bus garage and the headquarters is here in Urbana, but they do pay the diesel.
Oh, so they do pay our local Urbana taxes at the MTD fueling station? Or are they exempt by some kind of direct supplier purchase?
That I know of. Elizabeth.
I believe, I believe they are exempt. I haven't confirmed that. I didn't go down and look at our, you know, motor fuel tax receipts, but I believe they are.
Mary Alice.
I can't remember entirely which conversation it was, but there was conversation about electric vehicles. And, oh, Elizabeth's now raising her hand. Maybe Elizabeth can expand.
So, I think when we talked about this some time ago in two-by-twos, we talked about different options. And, and one of the issues with the motor fuel taxes is that we're not capturing revenue from electric vehicles. I think, I think, well, I believe that that solution lies at the state level. So, a tax like a wheel tax, which is very cumbersome for local governments to collect, could capture that. But I, I believe that the state's going to have to address that in any case as motor fuel tax revenues diminish. Perhaps they would implement ideally a wheel tax that gets collected at the state level because they handle all the vehicle registrations. They have information about the gross vehicle weight. They can apply, they could apply a local tax. There's not been any action on that, but that seems like probably the best solution for cities all across the state.
Grace.
Thank you. And just recapping some final bigger-picture thoughts here. I do have some larger-picture budget concerns, and I don't like to have to increase taxes on residents, especially for something that unfortunately has become a necessity in our society, like fuel and transportation. Think that we definitely need to take some of our infrastructure repairs seriously and that we need to be sure that that's kept in mind and prioritized when we're talking about budget expenditures. So, I don't love it, but I understand that unfortunately, I think it's what is necessary. I still have some concerns about it going to the Consumer Price Index automatically after three years. I'm glad that we at least capped that at 5% or less of an increase each year, but I still do have concerns about that just going automatically.
Any other comments? Mary Alice.
So, I, I agree. I don't, I don't like raising taxes. I don't think anybody likes raising taxes. But in this case, it is directly tied to a use. And we have not raised it, I believe, since 2015. I don't think it's been raised, so it's been quite some time. I did want to let the public know. I actually learned of a new program that I thought was pretty cool through the Regional Plan Commission, which is a transportation program. They will help people pay for car repairs, up to $1,400 in our county, if somebody qualifies for Medicaid or SNAP benefits. So, I just wanted to spread the word. Maybe that'll help a little bit with the pain, but I thought that was an interesting and nice program.
James.
Yeah, I did, I do appreciate the fact that nobody wants to hear about new taxes at this point in time. Costs, costs are high in a lot of ways. We did wait for 10 years before addressing this. Of course, costs are also going up for repairing the roads and doing that kind of work. I did want to assure individuals that I looked last, last week when we were talking about this, what a 0.5% cap would look like. If we had had a CPI increase built in from 2015 over that 10-year period, the tax would have gone up to like 8 cents and a quarter. So, so the rate that it's going to go up is going to be modest going forward. It probably won't keep up. I can, I can tell you that even with that 0.5% cap, since some of the years it's likely going to be lower, like 0.303, 0.25, we're going to get to another 10 years down the road, and we're going to see that, that that has lost ground, too, against the rate of the cost of repairing the roads going up. So, I think we've put in an effective check on that. But in the long run, I think we're going to have to revisit that and look at how we invest in infrastructure and how we pay for that.
Any other comments? Will the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colasetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes.
Last on, from Committee of the Whole, I move for approval, Ordinance Number 2024-09-031, An Ordinance Reviving, Revising the Annual Budget Ordinance, Budget Amendment Number One, omnibus.
Second.
Moved by Grace, seconded by Mary Alice. Discussion. Grace.
Thank you. Just reiterate some of my concerns about the budget situation for the rest of this year. And then, reiterating slash clarifying that the net change in the general fund is $66,000-some. And that is from additional repairs for the ladder truck that we didn't know until it got into the shop and cleanup from recent storms. Is that correct?
So, that there's a net decrease in the general fund, net decrease in fund balance of $66,118. It's repairs for the ladder truck, but it's also additional storm cleanup.
Thank you. Just wanted to clarify that. We got some questions before, and I think that that's reasonable. But again, I just really want to express how concerned I am about the budget for the rest of this year. And I don't think that we can withstand much more in budget amendments. The way I'm calculating it, we have a little less than half a million in general fund that we can expend within our policy. So, I just want to be really aware of that when we're thinking of taking on new costs. Thanks.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colasetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Mayor Marlin?
Yes.
That motion passes. Thank you, Grace. There are no reports from special committees, reports of officers. I believe Will had a couple.
Thank you. I have two quick updates. The first is, and a quick ARPA.
Can you speak a little louder, please?
Sorry, last time I was too loud. I have two updates today. The first is about ARPA. So, next week, we're going to have, RPC will be here, and they're going to present the project's annual reports for the fiscal year ending in June. And the idea is to give you the presentation kind of containing the full reports in the packets next week. But we'll give you the abridged version during the presentation so that we don't take all night. And the review of the ARPA project is also one of our strategic goals that we passed recently. And then in two weeks, following the presentation of the annual reports, we'll have a discussion item on the agenda to talk about allocating the remaining project funds that we have. So if you remember, when we first allocated projects, there was about $100,000 of funds that we didn't obligate in case something came up and we thought we needed it. And then one project also didn't quite get it off the ground, so we have a little bit of extra money. There's about $300,000 all told that we'll have to allocate by the end of the year. So we'll have a discussion or start a discussion about how we want to do that after we view the annual reports. So that's the first update. The second update is, again, just reiterating that the special census is live. And then beginning in October 15th, the census switches from the Internet self-response to counting in person. So if you have an Internet self-response that you haven't responded to yet, please get the word out that people should fill that out as soon as possible. Once they go to in-person counting, they will close the Internet self-response. So if there's some outstanding Internet self-response, we want to try to get as many of those done in the next week that we can.
Just to tag on to that, we're recounting certain neighborhoods, mostly close to campus, that were undercounted in the 2020 census. Individuals in those households or those individual households have received, I believe, three mailings to date, all with a QR code that people can scan and get to the online response site. And they just put in a special code and take the census. And it's incredibly important for every household to participate. If you have a card, you're counted. Everyone's living in Urbana, you're counted if you're in those certain areas. So very important to the city. Mary Alice, you have a question?
Yes, I do have a question. Seeing as we have a student population that ebbs and flows, and we also have a significant international population, has there been any special outreach to international students in the area, telling them exactly what it is? They are a resident here, so they should be filling it out, even though they're not a citizen?
Yes.
Okay.
We also have signs up in the neighborhoods that are being counted and various other outreach.
Thank you.
A lot of outreach. One last thing is another task that will come before us on October 21st is we will have a discussion on elected officials' compensation. Once every four years, the city council is tasked with setting salary levels for all elected officials in Urbana. So that includes the city council mayor, city clerk, and those are the municipal offices. Township, the town board will be considering the township supervisor and assessor salaries separately. So before that, we've pulled together comps from different cities plus Urbana salaries from the past 10 years. So you have some historical information to go by. We have to set these salaries before 180 days before the next council before the next elected officials take office. So we have to get this done by early November. Just a heads up that that's coming. And we'll try to get the comps and the background information out to you as soon as we can. All right, we'll move on to, there's no business. Last item on the agenda is discussion of the access to the Alternative Response Task Force. I did want to provide the background information that I believe is important to this discussion and then, of course, turn it over to council. Based on some of the comments that I heard and emails that we read, there is some misunderstanding as what was actually proposed. So I think it's important for us all to start off actually in the same place and see where the discussion goes from there. So just from background, from people listening who haven't been in on this from the beginning, in spring of 2023, the city of Urbana contracted with Barry Dunn. They conducted a multi-phase operational assessment of the Urbana Police Department, the Urbana Fire Department. There were four parts to this project. They did a staffing study for UPD and the Urbana Fire Department. They analyzed the essential calls for service. The third phase of this is to develop recommendations for the city council to consider for developing a proposed, an alternative response plan. And then the second, the fourth phase of this will be actually a plan for implementation of it. Parts one and two were completed earlier this year. This fall, Barry Dunn is going to facilitate the work of the Alternative Response Task Force. And this goal of the task force is basically to develop options for an alternative response plan that will be considered, debated, and action would be taken by the Urbana City Council. So the task force is comprised of 18 members. They represent community social service and mental health agencies and organizations, healthcare institutions, emergency 911 dispatch, city of Urbana Police, Fire, Community Development Services, Cunningham Township, and Urbana City Council. And just to give you an idea of the breadth of the expertise on this community task force, I just wanted to read you the members of the organizations represented on the task force. They include the Champaign County Mental Health Board, NAACP of Champaign County, the Well Experience, Cunningham Township, CU Trauma and Resilience Initiative, First Followers, Champaign County Regional Planning Commission, the Community Services Division, Rosecrant's Behavioral Health, RACES, the Race Advocacy, Rape, I'm sorry, Rape Advocacy Counseling and Education Services, Courage Connection, Carl Foundation Hospital Emergency Department, OSF Heart of Mary Medical Center, the Refugee Center, MetCAD 911, Urbana City Council, City of Urbana, Department of Community Development Services, Urbana Police Department, and Urbana Fire Department. So what Barry Dunn, and I will say, we started this wrongly, made an assumption, I guess, that the meetings would be televised, recorded, and open for observation by the public. And that was before actually having a conversation with Barry Dunn. Once we got into conversations with Barry Dunn, we learned that they did have a different proposal for logistics. So I just wanted to share with you what they had proposed, and then, of course, the discussion goes from there. They are proposing to, for the first public presentation by Barry Dunn would be to the Urbana City Council on August 14th during a city council meeting. And they wanted to explain.
August?
October.
Boy, this is not a good night for me. October 14th. And they want to explain the task force process. Then the next morning, Tuesday, the first task force workshop would occur, and that's what they're proposing to be for task force members only in person from 9:00 to 1:00 p.m., 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. That would be followed by a second task force workshop, task force members only, in person, 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Then if they need a third workshop, they would schedule that. Then they wanted to do kind of a mid-course option for what has been, had been discussed to date, what kinds of options have been identified by the task force, and that to be done in a public meeting with the community. They would also have an option to seek online public input. So that would be an opportunity for everything to be reported out. At that point, people can ask questions, make comments, submit online comments, and in person. Then the task force would meet again, task force members only, to review and revise the options based on what they have heard from public input and response to public input. And the final output would be a presentation of proposed options. And what they're calling a proposed plan, as described to us, and Mary Alice and I actually did have a Zoom conversation with Michelle Winesettle from Barry Dunn. Mary Alice represents the city council on the task force. And what she described is that the output that will get to the city council and to the public is that they would identify, the task force would identify, the calls for service types that are potentially available for alternative response, possible responders to those types of calls for service, plus all the logistics associated with that. And then what's presented to the public and to the council for to consider and to take action on are to consider those options and identify how you want to move forward from there. The task force is not taking action, is not making decision on behalf of the public. The task force is to come up with the options for the council and the public to consider. But anyway, that is what was proposed, and that is where this discussion can begin.
Grace.
Thank you for some of that background from administration. Did want to speak on this discussion that Chris and I had added. To build off of that background, from what's all publicly on the record in the end of August, we discussed the formation of this task force, and the mayor committed publicly that those meetings would be, of the alternative task force, would be public, open to the public, recorded, posted. That's what we agreed upon publicly at a city council meeting just over a month ago. And then last week, I was informed that Barry Dunn didn't think that was appropriate to have these meetings public. And I echo that I agree with the sentiments from the public that this is unacceptable. Myself and other members of the public want to follow the conversations, and this is what we agreed upon. It's going back on what was promised to the public when we created the idea of this task force, and it's catering to a company that's working for us. I've only heard concerns from Barry Dunn, not from any of our community representatives, about having these meetings public. The whole intent of this is to create a public service, and I think that creation needs to be done in a public process. I think this is similar to our commissions. Some could consider it as sort of an ad hoc commission, and I often go back and watch those commission meetings for context. And that's what I'm expecting to be able to do with this Alternative Response Task Force and what we agreed upon when I didn't volunteer to be on it, not knowing that I would be excluded by not being on it, and also every member of the public besides the 12 representatives. I also have concerns about the guidance in these conversations from Barry Dunn based on their past listening sessions. Barry Dunn says that they want to work with the community to create an alternative model, but they only want the 12 representatives and exclude the entire public at large in those conversations to even see what happens. I think that the council and the public needed to be consulted about this at the very least and not just told that it's changed and this is what's happening. So I've heard some mention of a compromise of doing something similar to the council goals setup, which I still think is upsetting, but I think a more acceptable compromise than nothing at all. And then I'm also wondering how anything that we might change would be enforced. Based on years of experience and this current issue, I don't trust the administration to keep their word on what we discuss and agree on in a public meeting. I'm willing to draft a resolution directing that these meetings be public, if that's what's required, and we have support of the majority of council. So I'm very interested to hear from other council members how you feel about this and what steps you're willing to take on it. Thanks.
James.
Yeah, thank you. I do believe that this process has to be public from a standpoint of what we're doing is developing options. I do hear and validate the concerns about the direction. But I do believe the group that we've selected is a group of representation that I think I approve of and I support and I trust. One of the things that I'm concerned about is, and I'm bringing this from experience of what I observed going through the council goals process, is that we want all of those groups to come and share completely and talk about things that they might not want to talk about. Some of these groups represent vulnerable populations, so they might want to talk about processes and response situations that their practices, they don't want to share out there. We've heard that some individuals are concerned talking about changes from police action in these areas to other actions in these areas. They don't want to talk about it because they're concerned about members of the police force observing them talking about it and their fear of retribution in the future. So I want to find a way that we can balance that the work of this group is shared publicly and is not steered in a way that the consultants are telling us what to do, that it's this group that's telling us what to do. But I also want to create a space where they can, whether it's in small groups, have a chance to work on this without, you know, individuals with very strong agendas reacting to it while they're trying to do it, maybe coming after them if they suggest things that don't fit what's wanted by a certain segment of the population. We need to give this group space to work, or we're going to end up with something that is not satisfactory to anyone at the other end of this. I think back to work that the county did surrounding the jail where they had to implement a task force that looked more deeply into those practices in Champaign County. And that group had a very hard time getting started to do their work. And what came out at the other end had some useful language in it, but it didn't translate into actual actions in the short term afterwards. So I really hear these concerns that are being raised, and I recognize why they're being raised. But I want to give this process an opportunity for the work to be done and the outcomes to be shared and no steering to happen. That's where I sit.
Jim.
Yeah, thank you. So there's a lot here, and I think, you know, there are nuances we can discuss, but I think it's important just to clearly state that this process has to be public. That's what we've committed to. That's what the task force members were told. And I think that even just in terms of the people were asking to devote their time to this, if this is not a transparent process, we're either asking those agencies and individuals to be part of something that very well may, for a lot of people, not feel like it's in the best interest of the city. So either asking them to recuse themselves and not be part of that process or be part of a process that does not feel participatory and transparent. So I think even just in terms of the individuals were asking to devote this time, I think it does a disservice to try to change this process in this way. I hear the concerns about, you know, if there's information that a smaller organization might not want to share publicly. But again, I'll draw on my own experience sitting on a task force for the state. All official work of the task force was done in compliance with OMA. There were maybe meetings with individual members of the task force for work that needed to be done outside of the task force meetings, where it was then reported back during the official task force meetings. But any official work of the task force had to be done in compliance with OMA. And I think wherever we end up in terms of determining a process, since we're having a conversation about it now, which I think is important, because again, we hired a consultant. If Barry Dunn doesn't feel like they can do the work of the city of Urbana, then we need to find a different consultant.
Mary Alice.
So I appreciate both council and the public's concerns on this matter. I've thought a lot about this process, and I just want to kind of go through it. I wrote down some notes based on the public comment so far. And so what I heard people tell us was there wouldn't be an opportunity for public input, that this would be held behind closed doors, that people wanted to be present when decisions were made, they wanted to have public participation, and they wanted to have trust within the public in the process. Those are summary. I probably forgot a couple of things, but those are the ones that really stuck out to me. And so as I think through this process, there's a couple of things that I want to just emphasize, and I know the mayor said some of it, which is, at the end of the day, the task force is not going to give us a complete proposal. This is what you need to do. The goal of the task force is to lay out different options that city council can consider. And then that part where decisions are made, that is following our normal, everyday practice of having input from the public, having conversation, that's all open. And that whole process is what will eventually, hopefully, provide us an alternative way to handle public safety in our community. That said, there is also an opportunity which we hadn't discussed before, which I think is a good direction. And that is, is that there will be a draft proposal. is a good direction, and that is, is that there will be a draft proposal. That draft proposal will then be available to the public and the public will be able to provide feedback back to the consultant, but also to the task force. And then the task force will be able to take that feedback before they finalize the final options. That piece wasn't in there before and I think it, it offers a really good opportunity for there to be participation throughout the entire community on what that product that comes out of that task force looks like at the end. So I was the one who proposed that we follow a similar procedure as we did with council goals. And for those of you who weren't familiar with that process, we met at another location and I'm not saying we need to meet at another location, but we met at another location in which we were, the last time Will was the one who, who stood up and kind of told us the game plan and what we were going to do. And then we all broke into groups and we had city staff with us and we worked through different problems. And then at the end of that, we all came back together and we talked about what each group said and what each group did and, and then we had kind of this whiteboard where we discussed all the different options. That part was all in the public, that was all recorded, that was all archived. So what I would like to propose to allow for people to have conversations and maybe bring up ideas or things about their organization that maybe they don't want recorded and people saying, well, you said such and such about this. My proposal is a similar process where Barry Dunn comes in, tells us what the goals are for the day, you know, what we need to discuss, then people go and break into groups and discuss things and then we all come together as a group and we report out exactly what happened, what, what the conversation was about and that all be done publicly and recorded. So that's my proposal for how this moves forward, but I'm certainly willing to hear other people's ideas. I do want to say one further thing, we have seven city council members up here right now. The task force has 16 bodies. And as you see, night after night, it's, it's a long time for us to go through all of these pro, and wait for every single person to talk. So imagine that with 16 people up here and the amount of time that we have. So I think even from the logistical perspective of allowing everybody to have an opportunity to have a voice. These task members all represent different communities, they all represent different actions that can be taken, 911 will be there, there's all different groups of people. And I think it's really important, because we spent so much time thinking about who should be on this commission, that we allow for those conversations to happen and that everybody has an opportunity to talk.
Who hasn't spoken yet? Chris?
I just, I have a lot to say, but I'm, I need to ask some questions first. Number one, when is the second meeting? November 19th, is that correct?
Proposed to be November 19th.
Proposed, yeah, yeah. November 19th. I don't understand who would retaliate or steer. I think I heard the police would be doing that or are being accused of that, so maybe, James, you could clarify that. Mary Alice, what the public wants to do is just watch and listen to the meeting, not participate. And those are my first three questions.
James?
Yeah. We have had individuals come and speak to this council about being concerned representing individuals who won't come and speak to the council because, for fear that if their name was out there, they could be retaliated against. I'm not saying that that's a valid concern, but people have stood in this audience and said that this person's not coming to talk to you about this because they don't want to be identified as being connected to this feedback that's going to be given. And so that, that's what I'm referring to when I talk about that.
Yeah, but it's going to be live streamed, so couldn't, I was proposed to be live streamed, so couldn't they watch from home and never be seen?
Yes, actually, if, if what, I, I would be actually very supportive of a circumstance where the meeting could be shared and observed, but not necessarily be an open session where people are sitting in an audience watching. Because I think that create, also is a, a thing that creates a barrier to people participating. I'm talking about the participants.
You're talking about up here?
It's not us.
The 16, no, I mean the 16.
Yeah. There, there can be a, a barrier to participating in your full self when you're under observation.
By people out there?
Yes, potentially.
Potentially, okay.
Can I just interject here?
Go ahead, go ahead.
Don't make the assumption that all 16 people will be around this dais all the time. It's possible that they may need to, as Mary Alice alluded, to break up into smaller groups to discuss a particular topic and then come back as a larger group. So we're going to need to use much of this room possibly for those smaller group sessions just like we did, you know, in the council goals. I don't, I don't know, you know, the, Barry Dunn will facilitate this task force and the task force itself may have ideas how they want to operate once they get together, but, but this entire room, audience area, we can't guarantee would be available for the public to sit in because it may be needed for people to spread out and work. So it's hard to know. James?
Yeah, I did want to follow along with something Jay said about the state commission that she was working with where some, some of the work was done maybe one-on-one to the side. That is the kind of environment that might allow people to share things that they, they weren't willing to do, sitting at the front of the table. And so what I may be talking about is just a degree. You know, what, what does that opportunity look like? I was conceiving it in terms of the small groups that were used in the council goals because that's the thing. But if it's, if it's another way of doing that, that kind of breaks it out and then pulls things back in, that gives that kind of, kind of safety for feedback, that, that would be, that would be a way to accomplish it, accomplish what I'm thinking of and still maintain an overall more open conversation for the, for the larger discussion.
Jay?
I want to make sure Grace has a chance to speak again and then I can hold mine until after, after Grace.
Thank you. Just wanted some clarification from my perspective. We can change locations and we've done that before, that this building, this room isn't a limitation. We can have multiple recording devices, so logistically it is possible to have breakout rooms and the public attend or listen with recordings. And then also to the point that when we break out into small groups and report back exactly what happened, I think that's absolutely not true. Never been my experience in a breakout room, that's not the way it happens. It's a summary and it's often filtered through the one person who speaks on behalf of the group through their perspective and what they thought was most important. I've never seen it be exactly or representative even of a small breakout group. I would propose when we're getting to a point where we're ready for it, that at least for deciding and documenting the will of council, that we have straw poll votes for options of keeping the meetings closed as proposed, having them completely OMA friendly, completely open and then somewhere in between. And I think that we need to have a gauge of the will of the majority of council and then take possible next steps of getting some kind of an agreement from administration or drafting a resolution to make it so.
Jay?
Thanks. So I'm, I'm glad to hear about the midway report. I think that's another good tool, but I think to me that's, that's supplemental, it's not a replacement, right? Like that's a great way of making sure it's in, actually engaging for folks who have different learning styles, but the way this has been discussed and envisioned is a, a process where the public can actually be part of it. Again, I can only go back to my own experience being on a, on a large task force. Like I said, all of it, and sorry, we've been throwing the term OMA, it's the Open Meetings Act, which dictates how we do all official city business. It is, you know, a sunshine law, right? We're talking about like, let's keep this in the sunshine, let's make sure it's clear it's in the sunshine. I think that's really, really important. But even being part of a large statewide task force, I can't really think of a situation where it was an issue that there were a lot of members, you know, if people had something to say, they said something. If people didn't have something to say, they didn't, they listened. I also want to be careful that we're not speaking for the organizations that have volunteered their time for this too, to say what they are or not afraid of. I know personally, many of the people who are on this task force, and they're some of the most courageous, dedicated, committed members of our community that I have ever met. So I think they can judge for themselves what they feel comfortable sharing publicly and if there's input that they feel like needs to be provided in another way. I think it's important to address that concern. I think there, that we should provide them with another way to provide information. If there is concern that they could be retaliated against or if there's agency information that doesn't feel appropriate for a public setting. But the public needs to be present at these meetings.
Can I ask a clarifying question? By present, is that the ability to watch livestreamed or the ability to be in the room?
I think we need to honor our commitment, which was to make it so that the public could be present and that it would be livestreamed. You know, I think if we had had this conversation a while ago and said, ah, it's just not feasible, maybe that would, I'd feel differently, but we made a commitment up here publicly to our community and I understand Barry Dunn doesn't like it, but we don't work for Barry Dunn. We work for the residents of Urbana and they're telling us that they want us to honor the commitment we have already made to them and that's what I intend to do.
Mary Alice?
I just wanted to clarify, so if I use the word exactly, it wasn't meant to be word for word verbatim, it was to report out. And I agree that some things are translated, so to speak, based on what other people heard. The other thing I just wanted to clarify is I don't think that the midterm report is a replacement for, for public, for the ability for the public to see it. Rather, I was using it as an example of how people are concerned about not having the ability to have input, that this gives them the ability to have some input. So it wasn't, it's not in, in lieu of, right? So I just wanted to make those two clarifying points.
Any other general observations or do you want to try to narrow down some options? Grace?
Know if you have proposals or, again, I would propose straw polls on those three different options.
That usually works very well. Let's identify the options.
I had proposed keeping them closed, as you've proposed in these changes, having them completely following Open Meetings Act guidelines. And then number three, some compromise in between that we would figure out if that is the majority will.
Closed as described, which is not completely closed, but it's, but the logistics as described by Barry Dunn, is that?
Yes, in your memo where the meetings are in-person, task force members only, not recorded or posted.
Okay. Mary Alice?
I just want to clarify, I don't think that the fully open option that was discussed about two months ago included all OMA rules. I could be wrong. My understanding was it would be open for the public to view physically, it would be recorded, right? And it would be livestreamed, but that's not technically all of the OMA rules. So I just wanted to clarify that that would be the second option that you listed.
Yes, and I do understand that is different from what we originally agreed, but since we're making a whole bunch of changes to exclude the public, we could make an option to have it even more inclusive.
They're open to view in-person, livestream. What's the third? Recorded, okay.
Grace, what I'm hearing you say is you also want public participation to be part of that process?
That would be OMA guidelines, yeah.
That's, that's why I wanted clarification on OMA, because that is, okay.
Sharice?
Do the people on the task force have any say about what, how they might want to go through this procedure? I'm not on a task force, so I'm basically just like, I feel like they might, they may want to have some say about an option themselves, that's all.
Something to keep in mind, they have three to four hours each session and these are really very busy people. So, so if the work is going to focus on getting a product out that we all can find useful and have options to choose from, I think having the meetings open to viewing in-person, livestream and recording is very, very transparent. James?
Yeah, remind me, there, there are 12 members?
There's 18.
18 members of the task force?
Yes.
So, so by OMA guidelines, you could have four, groups of four, have a discussion without violating the majority of a quorum situation? You'd be, you, you could have four individuals, you could have breakout groups of four and have a discussion that is not required by OMA to be public or recorded and so forth. Am I interpreting? Quorum would be, would be 10 or you'd have to have 10 to have a meeting and five would, I guess six would be a majority of quorum, so maybe it would be five.
That is correct.
Five would be the majority of the quorum, yeah. Under that set of numbers, yeah.
Yes.
So that, that, that would, that would say that following OMA, that they could have breakout sessions of groups of four that wouldn't need to have recording devices in each of those groups? Is that correct?
That is correct and that is similar to the model that we did for council goals, which were fully compliant with OMA and did also have public input. And if you recall, in the interest of time, given the large scope of work that you were conducting in those meetings, they amended the public input guidelines so that it was just 30 minutes of in-person input with a hard stop and then it was breakout sessions and that was conducted with no more than a majority of a quorum, with staff intermingled to have those discussions and then they reassembled as a quorum and you guys shared publicly.
Thanks, I just want to clarify that.
I would just add, I think what, the hypothetical that you presented, you were sort of suggesting that there could be separate individual public meetings, sort of conceptually under OMA, is that what you're asking?
No. I was suggesting that depending on what, how small the working group could be, you could have working groups that would comply with the expectation of the Open Meetings Act.
Yeah, technically, but still one, it would be one larger meeting.
If they were convening as a whole, they would, they would follow all the rules.
That's right, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Mary Alice?
All right, so I just want to be really clear here about the rules. So Darcy, you're saying that when we ran council goals, we came together as a group. I know we called, we called the meeting to order and we took roll call and so forth. And then we had 30 minutes of public input and then all of that was recorded and broadcast live and then we all broke into groups. I think in this room, we went over to these different teams, right? And that was not recorded, that was just us like talking amongst our small groups and then we all came back together.
So the recording was continuous even while you were in the breakout groups, but because you were not speaking into mics, it was like ambient noise audio. We did that both when it was video recorded here and televised live and then additionally when we were offsite at Stone Creek Church and Ilias. We did it with a tape recorder and it was a similar fashion where the recording went on continuously and they are still available on our website, it's like two and three hour recordings. But the only things that were picked up on the recording that in my opinion are discernible is when individuals spoke into a mic one at a time, which we passed around any time they came out of the working groups.
Okay, all right. So aside from the public participation piece, how we ran the city council goals would actually be in compliance with OMA. And so Grace, your third option, OMA rules, the council goals would, would meet that. Okay.
OMA requires public input and minutes to be kept though, so that is an important distinction with language, with intent.
And the task force itself could determine how much public input and when in the meeting it occurred. It could be at the beginning, the end, depending on how things go. Would someone like to summarize where you are right now? We can do a straw poll on that. We can do a straw poll on that.
Take a stab, I think we still have the option of keep meetings closed, have them...
Well, let's do a straw poll on that.
True.
Everyone in favor of following the logistics as outlined as I read by Barry Dunn? Okay, eliminate that one. We have the option that I'm hearing of following basically the format the council followed for, setting council goals.
Which, could I clarify, I think we've realized is, falls under the umbrella of OMA guidelines, so then clarifying that there would be recording, notices, public input, all that jazz.
Mm-hmm. Andrew?
It sounds like it's two variations of OMA. One where there's minutes and public participation, and then one that's maybe without public participation, and they're just viewing it. Do I have that correct? Right. So, like, two variations of OMA. Like, one that's strictly OMA, and one that's like, OMA light, I don't know, I wouldn't call it.
It's the observing, the recording, and the in-person presence of the public is very important, it sounds like, to everyone. If you don't follow strictly OMA, there's a lot less work on the clerk's end, for one thing, and, but you still should get the same result. And then you can choose public input to include. You have the option of, you have more flexibility. This meeting has to follow OMA, the task force does not, but that's your choice.
Wondering if it is, 'cause I guess we can get to that afterwards, but again, back to the point of wondering the, the outcome of any of these agreements tonight. If we decide that, yes, that is the majority of, the will of the majority of the council to have these follow Open Meetings Act style, is that what you would do? I just, I'm not sure procedurally, the next step, if we need to have a resolution to direct that action, or if that's something you're willing to agree to?
I'm willing to talk with Barry Dunn about this. I mean, yes, ultimately, they have to agree to do this. If not, they don't. Jay?
So, I'm just gonna say again, if Barry Dunn says no, they can't be compliant with the Open Meetings Act, we need a different consultant, because I'm not interested in working with someone who's not gonna be compliant with state law.
That's right. James?
I'm gonna say something, and then I'm gonna look immediately to my left. But, task forces empowered by local government are a fuzzy place with OMA. Typically, when it's completely empowered by one unit of government, which is what we're talking about here, they do have to comply with OMA. But when they represent, like, multiple parties coming together, particularly if it involves other units of local government, they aren't necessarily required to do it unless it is specifically detailed for certain statewide commissions, frequently who have things about how they do OMA that's non-standard, because it was written when you couldn't do Zoom everywhere like we can now. So, is that relatively true? Did I just represent it appropriately?
Yeah, I think fuzzy is a good, a good descriptor. There are criteria that, you know, that the PAC would look at, for example, or the AG's office, in determining if there were a question, if it were challenged. But typically, it comes down to, I'll summarize the criteria that they look at, it's the degree to which it's a, it's sponsored, compensated by, paid for, controlled by a city council, for example. Does it look more like a board or commission, or does it look more like a staff-level working group that might be temporary in nature, let's say? Are they taking final action? Are the members being compensated? Are they being formally appointed? There's a, there's a number of these kinda criteria that would be taken into consideration. It's not a, it would be all weighed together, I guess is what I would say. It's not a, a list that would require every criteria to be met, but it would be kinda ultimately a smell test based upon a number of data points that would be outlined. But it, it comes down to essentially how, how much under the council's formal control is it, and how much of it is a, an official body of, of the city, so. That's where the fuzziness comes in play.
Grace, and then James.
I appreciate the clarification on that, and I think in this case, this whole idea of the task force was created from council discussions, from the budget, obviously with public input along the way, as far as the idea and the desire for it. We all agreed up here publicly that this would be a public process for these meetings. It seems like we've already determined that, and we already have in the budget that no funds will be used from that account without council approval. So, I think we already have established the public precedent that the city council, who created the, this fund and inception of this, we had all agreed that they would be public from the get-go. So, I think that we already have set that kind of standard, and to go back on it now is just unacceptable, slash, maybe we'll run into some problems down the road, legally speaking.
James?
I would, I would say I'm, that I'm hearing consensus in going with full OMA in the spirit that we did council goals with, and that it doesn't pass the smell test. And so, an OMA light probably would put us at risk with the PAC, if somebody wanted to challenge that. So, I think you could ask if, for consensus on the full OMA version of this, and have six or seven hands go up.
Would you like a formal motion? That's true.
We could do the straw poll though, 'cause that was one of the options we identified.
There's straw poll for the, Chris?
Well, I just wanted to ask a quick question. Grace, would you be okay with limiting public input to 30 minutes?
Yeah, I think that's under OMA and at the discretion of the task force.
Okay.
Yeah, just as a reminder, you guys, I don't think actually have the authority to set the public input guidelines for any subsidiary bodies, so they would actually adopt that themselves, so.
All those in favor of full OMA guidelines for the task force? Or five? All those opposed? That passes. We will pass that information on to Barry Dunn. Grace?
Thank you. Again, I just really wanna go back to this point about, that sounds so silly. I have very little confidence that that will happen, when you said that you will talk to Barry Dunn, and it's up to them. I don't feel any confidence that you're gonna go to them and say, "This is what the council and the public for our entire city has decided."
They will watch this video.
They watched the last ones, and we agreed on it, I would presume.
I'm not sure they did, but they will watch this video.
Well, I hope so, and I, I am absolutely willing to say that I would like to draft a resolution directing it so, because I have little to absolutely no trust that this would actually happen after this discussion.
We have a meeting scheduled two weeks from tonight. That's, that's the next, that is the first meeting of the task force, tomorrow.
And I guess I'm, I guess my question would be, logistically, procedurally, if the majority of council could unofficially direct the city attorney to draft a resolution directing that these meetings be held according to Open Meetings Act? Seeing as this is a discussion, I think we've done that in the past. It's not an actual resolution, but in the discussion, the majority of council asking the attorney to draft something for a future meeting.
Mary Alice?
So, I'm, I'm just thinking about the timing here. So, in, in order for that to happen, the committee meeting would be on October 7th, and then the vote would be on October 14th. So, that's not really gonna have any impact, because they're gonna be here on the 14th, and the first meeting is on the 15th. So, I, I just don't, I don't think it's necessary, because it, I, I understand your concern. I'm just looking at the timeline. If we did this two weeks ago, of course, we didn't know any of this until recently, so, sorry.
James?
I was just gonna say, I, I don't know why we couldn't, if, in the event that this conversation with Barry Dunn goes in a negative fashion, I don't know why we couldn't call a special meeting of the city council to occur before or after the committee of the whole next week, and do it, do it then, if we needed to. There, there are circumstances that allow us to expedite consideration for something that is time-sensitive, so we could, so we could do that, and we could plan to do that once we actually hear what Barry Dunn's answer is gonna be from the conversation tomorrow.
Yeah, we'll do it tomorrow, we need to, right away. Jay?
Yeah, I, I think, again, I, I hear Grace's concern, 'cause I have a problem with it being framed as a discussion with Barry Dunn. This is direction to our consultant. And again, if they cannot fulfill the needs of the city of Urbana, then we need to figure out how to terminate our contract and find a different way forward, because there's already a lot of trust that's been lost with Barry Dunn, because members of the public haven't felt like they've had opportunities to fully participate. And I, you know, I can see the timeline and all that stuff, but I'm talking about how this community is feeling. If they want to have any validity in whatever they are putting forward, they need to understand the needs of this city. If they can't meet that, and that's for them to determine, they can walk away. They can say, "Hey, we can't do it like this." But it, it can't be a conversation with them, it needs to be direction, and if this isn't resolved by tomorrow, then I would be 100% in support of making sure that we have a resolution to clarify the intent of, of having this task force and have it binding. I'm, I'm fine with saying, "Let's go ahead and get moving on something," so we have it as, as a backup. I'm, I'm comfortable with that too. But I also think if this is something that we can get a clear commitment that will not be reverted again, I'm open to other, other options, but I think, again, there's, there's good reason that there is a question, right? If this is not what we agreed on, and now we're having this conversation again, and we're saying, "Well, you know, are we really gonna come back two weeks later?" If we can't facilitate it the way that we've intended, that we shouldn't be meeting in two weeks. We dragged this process out for years, and now we're quibbling about weeks because of the consultant. And again, if they can't do it, then, then they're not the right fit.
We will convey this exactly as this conversation occurred tonight, and get back to you as soon as we have an answer. Hopefully, it'll be to go forward as discussed tonight. Grace?
Thank you. So, I think that both things can happen. I appreciate you talking to Barry Dunn and trying to take that work-with-them approach. I think we can also start working on a resolution to just codify that and make sure that that is the outcome, especially giving the attorney and any other staff to have time to draft it. I don't know why we would wait and see if they're gonna accept, and you're gonna just take that and then try and draft something, when we could just do both. There's no harm, it seems, in doing the resolution, and then Barry Dunn agrees, and it's great. And then they don't agree, and then I guess we'll cross that bridge when we get to it. But I think we should have that resolution in the works. So, I would like to request that we'd have one more straw poll about directing the city attorney to draft a resolution for this coming COW meeting, October 7th. Kind of just spelling out this discussion that we would like for this task force meeting, all of these task force meetings to be compliant with Open Meetings Act. So, I'd request we take one more straw poll on that, please.
All those in favor? All those opposed? All right, two. All right.
May I ask, is that enough direction and specificity?
Excuse me, sorry, yes, that is, and we've got the discussion here. I think we've got plenty of, plenty of direction, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Any further discussion?
All right. We'll be in touch.